Welcome everyone, want to welcome everyone to the Kaula Loa Neighborhood Report for our meeting. This may, before we go into the agenda, I just want to go over the rules of speaking. To ensure the maximum opportunity for all attendees to hear the following guidelines will apply. Those joining the meeting are reminded to mute their microphones. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to type their question into the chat box or to raise their hand using the Raise Hand function, which is in the online meeting platform, which is indicated by hand or unmute yourself at the appropriate time as indicated by the chair. Accessing the meeting using your phone and your comment indicated by person listed star nine, Mr. Show the moderator that the person calling from that number was just to speak. Also unmute yourself or your, to unmute or leave your phone, press star six. Please wait until recognized by the chair. To begin, all comments, concerns, or questions shall be two minutes or less. To help all attendees have the opportunity to hear the presentations and comments, please place your device on mute until you would like to speak. When you are recognized by the chair, please unmute yourself and make your comments. Please not permit take any action on any agenda item as required by State Sunshine Law, HRS 92. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be ruled out unless addressed, added to the agenda. The two thousand four five of this nine member board is needed to add an item to the agenda. Islands may nine. Need major importance and effects of significant number of people. So before we start our agenda today, I was contacted by DOT after the agenda was submitted. So if you don't mind, I'd like with the board permission to add DOT to the government report section.
Yes.
So, board motion.
A motion that we include DOT in the meeting.
Second, have a second, alright, any reservations, any opposition, alright, DOT, thank you for coming today. Have you at the very end of our government reports, so that will be after State House Representative Sean Fleming. You, okay, with that, we will proceed into our agenda.
Do you like air conditioning?
And I must say, yes, I would burn away when I walked in and I felt the AC, that was beautiful.
Even without the neighborhood board, man.
Okay, so regarding, um, with our state matter reports, HFD, if you are present online or you see a person, please proceed.
Just my greater.
Yes.
Good evening, Captain Oki from the Hawaii Fire Station. I've been giving you the April stats for the Hawaii, Hawaii and two states combined, as well as our fire safety tip. For the month that April responded to two missing fire calls, three major alarms, big no fire. Fifty-four medical ones, one motor vehicle collision involving pedestrian. Three motor vehicle collisions, one mounted rescue and one ocean rescue. And our fire safety tick for the month is wildfire awareness, prevention and preparedness. So we want to stress that wildfires significantly threaten Hawaii's landscapes, wildlife and communities. With the dry conditions and everyday activities contribute to the risk. It's crucial to take proactive measures to prevent and mitigate wildfires. Lighten the load, reduce the fuels and the possibility of ignition of the landscape by maintaining your yard and cleaning your birds. Careful and contain. To use clear vegetation ten feet around any campfires and barbecues. Keep a shovel and water nearby and put them out full before walking in. Watch for sparks. Ensure machinery, chainsaw, trimmers, recreation vehicles and operating spark arresters are maintained. Lastly, learn more with these online resources. We encourage you to visit fire dot all the way that go. Put together a Hawaii management. Stand out, I think you guys got it, but you're online to turn it off, because this is all I explained today. With that, I wanted to answer a question from last month regarding two hazardous material incidents, I believe was asked, so I looked it up and One involved activating some upset alarm and the other one involves relating to from a personal. So I have any questions with concern?
Thank you, I will open up the fact information members. I mentioned one motor vehicle accident with a pedestrian.
I don't know the specifics exactly on that, I don't think it back to you next month, sorry. Could have been been included or found, sorry. I don't believe it was in problems because I never got one signed off on that. Okay, yeah, I'll follow up on that.
Questions, any other questions from board members? I did have one quick question. I noticed that I'm seeing along the highways, especially around the power lines, a lot more trees being cut down, pushed back, is that? I'm assuming that Seacoal, are you guys working with them on the setbacks and all of that, or is they're just doing that on?
Maybe that solely vehicle or private residents might be calling their own service. But yeah, we don't really. We don't even know if there's an issue basically, like parking wire or something in New York, but usually it's going to shoot people probably.
Got it, thank you.
Their job is to maintain the wires.
Board members, any questions? Okay, we'll go to members of the public in person, any questions for the fire department? Okay, we'll go to members of the community online, any questions from HFD? Okay, thank you very much for being seen, I'm thank you for your part with us, we'll see you next month, good evening. Um, moving forward, we're going to HPD, I believe, um, we have agents online. Please proceed with whoever.
Good evening, I'm Officer Jared Atkins. For Community Policing Team. The stats for April are, there was one motor vehicle theft versus five the previous month. There were five burglaries in April versus seven the previous month. There were twelve thefts versus fifteen the previous month. There were ten car break-ins in April versus one the previous month. And there were zero robberies versus zero the previous month. And then the stats for last year, there was only, um, one more motor vehicle theft this year. And seven more car break-ins this year. The burglaries and thefts and robberies were all lower this year compared to last year. And then I also have some information from, um, some concerns from last, from last meeting, so The last meeting, someone asked if there's accidents in front of Koko Luleu because of speed bumps. And, um, from our reports, I looked at all the reports for the past year, there were only Two motor vehicle accidents in front of Koko Luleu within the past year. One was the result of traffic, um, being stopped, someone was trying to make a left turn into the beach park. And someone rear ended that car that was waiting to make the left turn. Um, so that was not speed bump related, and then the other one was a minor MVC, and those are just strictly exchanges of information, there's no, um, details on What caused that accident, so I don't, I don't have that one. So it doesn't look like the speed bumps are causing more accidents in front of Koko Luleu, is what, what the reports are showing. And then we also, some concerns have come up in the past about illegal camping at Haula Beach Park in Koko Luleu. So we did a stored property ordinance operation today. At Haula Beach Park, three people were cited for illegal camping and several, um, Campsites were stored with the city and the trash was cleaned up. And, um, at Koko Luleu, there was no illegal campers, however, there was some trash left behind from, um, prior camps, so that was thrown away. Um, that's all I have, and I can take any questions or concerns.
Thank you, questions from board members?
I have a question, um. Do you know whether the burglaries or thefts are occurring, is it just Kaula Loa, or is it just one particular area?
Sorry, you kind of broke up, can you repeat the first part?
Particular areas are these tests or burglaries are occurring, is it just a Kaula Loa area itself, or is it just from a particular area? Or a Loa community?
It's, so it's spread out between Kaula and, um, Wailea Beach Park, so the whole area of Kaula Loa is spread out, it's not centralized in one area.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Questions from board members?
Yes. Regarding the Haula Beach Park, um, illegal camping, um. Can you, can you give us any more information on that? Was that people illegal camping who were houseless people?
Yes, so they were homeless people, um, prior to today's operation, they had been warned that it was coming, you know, and that Off free, outreach was offered to them in the form of, you know, if they wanted to go to a homeless shelter, we have the whole new program where they can Come and pick them up right then and there, and they can go over there with their belongings. So prior to today's operation, they're offered that, today, during, at the beginning of the operation, they were again offered outreach. They wanted to go to homeless shelter, they declined, all of them declined it, uh, the reason being that they didn't want to leave the, um, Haula area or the Wondred Side area.
Okay, I, I thank you for that report, and I'll just mention that after that happened, um, the Department of Parks and Rec that had a representative there also. Um, he was told, I wanted the homeless people to come over here, and we probably had a two hour talk. And I think something really positive is going to come out of this. We're going to have, um, two agencies work together to try to be sure this kind of thing doesn't happen again. That homeless people are having, that are camping there, uh, have paid Or have had an agency pay for their camping and that they will be legal and things won't have to be thrown away. And, um, so we're going to work on this, um, my philosophy is, um, many great minds working together can solve this thing. Uh, there's some inhumanity in, in doing what we're talking about, uh, just kicking people out who have no homes and no place to go, no resources. So we hope to make this a better place for people in general, including people who are houseless. So thank you very much, Officer, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, we worked with parks today, we're speaking with the, probably the same person. And, um, yeah, and we found out that IHS is coming out every Wednesday to try and help these people, because We know enforcement doesn't really work, right, we need to get them to some kind of housing or some kind of solution better than just illegal camping, so, yeah, that sounds, sounds good.
Thank you. Alright, other questions from board members? Any questions for member, members of the public in person? Questions for member? We'll see us, we have a question.
Aloha, thank you so much, um, we just wanted to thank your department for the arrest of the people In connection with the murder in Kahuku, are you allowed to say if the person who is, was deceased or the people that were arrested, were they all homeless?
Um, you're talking about the body that was found on, um, what is it called, um? I'm drawing a blank here, but past the shrimp fields, right, Marconi Road, you have the one you're talking about? I believe the victim was homeless, um, I'm not sure about the suspect. And, yeah, I can't, since, since it's still going to trial, I can't really talk about it anymore.
Okay, Mahalo.
Yep.
Thank you, there are any questions from members of the public online? Okay, thank you very much, uh, we'll, we'll go to see you next month.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward on our agenda, we have some time. Please proceed.
Hello, this is Sergeant Taylor, you are, you're a US Army representative. Uh, wanted to start off with the US Army Garrison Hawaii is holding its next hiring fair on twenty-one May At the AMR gym, it's beginning at zero eight thirty and ending at two. Uh, next up, US Army Garrison, they published their training advisory for Oahu on one May. Uh, as far as training, the army will continue training in the East Range area, small arms blank fire, that'll start one May through ten. And then the thirteenth through the thirty-first of May. It's day only, so it'll be six AM through six PM, and we're also going to be having aviation training, the ninth and twenty-second, and that'll only be during the day as well. Uh, there will also be artillery and mortar training, the first through the third, the twentieth through the thirty-first, day and night live fire. There will also be demolitions training seventeen May, and that will only be during the day. There will also be an increase of day and night aviation on Wheeler Army Airfield helicopter and cargo fixed wing aircraft, that'll be seventeen through twenty-two May. Uh, also, from twenty-second, expect to hear and see additional cargo planes and helicopters arriving and departing from Wheeler Army Airfield. Uh, we also have, the army is preparing a draft environmental impact statement For Army Training Land Retention of State Lands at KTA, Palmahu. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, and MMR, and that's to support continued military training. Um, pertaining to the question that was asked at the last board meeting For the acreage of the April prescribed burns, that was seventeen hundred acres over the course of several days. And, um, it was not near the fence line, the prescribed burns were located near a fire break, but not near the installation boundary. And also burning only took place during daylight hours. Right, so for any concerns, there's a new community concern line, and I can also put the email and the phone number in the chat. Pending any questions.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, please proceed, go ahead.
Say your name.
Oh, my name is Sunny Greer, I represent the fifth district of Kahana. Um, our board members got an invitation by Colonel Stephen, the Garrison Commander, to attend a public forum, I attended it. And there were also some members of, uh, North Shore and Neighborhood Board. I have to say, it was very eye opening, I want to extend Mahalo for the invitation to, um, the Garrison Commander, because I learned a lot. He was very open to hard questions, and housing is such a big issue all across the state. And he, and I want to share these tidbits that he shared, he said Hawaii is the only other location with DC where service members can live in any base On the, uh, in the state, meaning army soldiers can live on Navy Base housing. And that sixty-five percent of housing is available on base. Uh, that is well above the DOT benchmark of thirty-five percent, so they are trying really hard to address those issues. Um, and then he also, um, I wanted to share because she mentioned it, um. It's been in the news about, um, putting in your comments for the second, uh, second draft D I S, it's due on June seventh, this is the Pohopoloa Um, training, so I just wanted to point that out, but interesting fact, Wheeler Air Force Base is the only airfield above sea level upon Hawaii. Um, that was shocking, and that, um, Hawaii's environmental program, the Army's environmental program is the largest one in the entire Army, can share that. So issues of natural resources and archaeology are important, we actually have the only SEED, SEED, S E E D lab Um, in the entire DOT, so I'm actually very shocked and proud. All of. Conversation, I heard if they offer this again, these public forums, we should go.
Alright, any other questions from board members? Alright, any little questions for members of the public in person? Any questions for members of the panelists online? Alright, thank you guys very much, appreciate your time, thank you for coming, we'll go to see you next month.
Thank you.
Okay, moving down the agenda to our government reports. Um, do we have a representative from Mayor Vic Grangiaris, obviously, he was cast, and the week she met me on the Kennedy, and I, I think there were pets sent, so I was put in the photo and sent to board members. Um, do, I believe she should have some staff of them, councilmember Matt Wires Office? Okay, with a note of that, we do not see anyone there.
Oh, wait, oh, she's here.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, please proceed, thank you.
Sorry, Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wires Office, um, so just a couple of things, um, wanting to highlight the summer fund program That's going to be starting up, so for the Winware District, um, next week, Thursday, May sixteenth, um, DPR or Parks rather, is going to be, um, taking registration. I can go ahead and send, um, the NCO the, uh, the information for distribution. Um, summer fund's going to run from June tenth to July twenty-sixth, um, eight thirty AM to two PM, excluding the holidays on June eleventh and July fourth. Um, you can register online at PROS, that's P R O S dot H N L dot I N F O. I'll also send over the phone numbers if you're unable to register online, and you can call the park directly to arrange, uh, registration. Uh, and then just a couple of updates from, uh, I believe last time, um, the Put a siren, um, the replacement battery, um, has arrived on island. And it's scheduled to be delivered to Maima within the next seven to ten days. Um, and then, I don't know if this really matters to you guys, but I'm sure you've seen it, but, um, Ka'ala Lea Road, the illegal dumping, um, EMB inspectors have been making regular checks on that. Um, the most recent being this past Monday, um. The inspector noted that there, um, there's a fan at a dishwasher, so he did, um, schedule bulky trash pickup, so the fan's going to be picked up on the thirteenth of May. And then the dishwasher on the sixteenth. The Laia Yard, which is, um, responsible for picking up the regular trash, has also been monitoring it and Reported that the area has been doing a lot better. Um, that's all that I have for councilmember, if anyone has any questions, I can take them back. Thank you.
Thank you, questions from members of the board? Okay, questions from members of the public in person? We'll go to questions from members of the public online. Please proceed. Please proceed.
Um, yes, thank you so much, Kelly, um, with the new events in the, uh, state legislature, which looks like the counties will be, um, taking over Um, vacation rental enforcement, um, is, it, there have been such devastation in so many families Priced and pushed out in this area, is Matt, um, taking or putting forth any new initiatives Um, to make sure that the vacation rentals, especially we're concerned about the whole houses and whole apartments that are rented out year round. Um, that they're fined and shut down, and they'll pay their back taxes, is he, um, looking into that, or any way that Um, they can have more enforcement with DPP? A recent K I T V article said only a hundred were fined, and that's, it's just, that's very, that's low. Considering we have thousands of pound thousands.
Well, I know one of the issues that DPP is having is enforcement, I mean, I don't know if you're aware, but they, they can't just enter the property, that would be trespassing. So a lot of times it's, um, God, I can't even tell you the amount of extensive work that they need to put into, um, you know, and these people are really clever With the way that they do their, um, advertising online, so, um, we did actually meet with DPP, um, with their, um, you know, their I guess their STR division, if you want to call it that, and, yeah, it's just, it's really frustrating, um, but they are doing their best, they are making a lot of headway, um. But as far as councilmember putting forth new initiative, I would need to follow up with him on that. I don't have an answer. No problem, thank you for your patience, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from, uh, members of the public online, please proceed. Hello, go ahead with the question, keep your hand up.
Okay, so, um, we have those big storms coming, and, um, have they decided to do anything about helping With stream cleaning before the thing hits, or there's a lot of streaming that are not open?
Um, there, there is a stream maintenance schedule, um, if you can maybe send me the specific stream name, I can find out When the next maintenance cleaning is going to happen.
Oky why stream is, the sand is all, is over the top of the bridge, so there's no way water's going to get out from there. Okay, I drove past it today.
Also Kelly, this is Donnie, Kelly Paddock. Um, typically before a wind, a, a storm alert is issued like this, the city automatically All these people, see, the people on, the city automatically sends its, um, Machinery out to clean out the streams, and I, we haven't seen that this time, so, um, I hope there's not a policy change, because this is so critical. Um, streams are full of sand and can really back up and, and do a lot of flooding, so even worse than, uh, otherwise. So please, uh, find out and, and I'll, I'll do it tomorrow too myself, because this is, this is an issue that needs to be addressed as soon as possible, thank you.
Thank you, I'll have to look into that.
Okay, thank you, any other questions for members of the public online? Okay, very good, seeing you now, thank you so much for your time, we'll look forward to seeing you next month. Okay, uh, looking for US House Representative, Congresswoman Jota Pudar, her staffers and, uh, news editor, something, I'm sure it was asked by board members, so Move on in our agenda, Governor Representative Crystal Kia. Kia, I'm not sure, this is, I'm not sure about the other. Never been here for six months.
Thank you, I don't.
Um, moving on to Senator Brenton Arak, or Stafford, do you have anyone online?
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
Yeah, please proceed.
Hi, good evening, um, Chair Board Members, thank you for having me, my name is Elizabeth Tassofita Bakke, I'll be giving Senator Awas monthly report. Um, as many of you already know, we, we came, the legislative has come to an end last week, unfortunately, a lot of Or many of the bills, Senator, um, Awa was a lone opposition, and a lot of the bills that would negatively, negatively impact, um, either our community or just our, or just our local members. So now we're in, currently in an interim, um, and during this interim, as I mentioned at last month's report, um, and also I think Councilmember Wires Rep had mentioned, we, we too had, um, sat down together with DPP in regards to a lot of these short term rental homes. Uh, specifically, the, the rental hosts across of the Polynesian Cultural Center. Um, again, Senator Awa had a video on that on social media, and so we wanted updates, unfortunately, um. Just, I think this month, the owner of the, um, while we were in the middle of trying to do our own investigation, the, the owner of the short term, the illegal short term rental Um, had passed away this month, either this month or last month, um, so we're currently trying to meet with the children. Um, because we had gotten word that they're going to continue on with the illegal short term rental, and that the children actually run it from the mainland. So we're trying, um, and like the city's rep had mentioned, it's actually frustrating, um, it's, it's, it's a lot harder than we thought. We would have to, when we sat with DPP, they pretty much said that we would have to show receipts of, um, of the booking, of, of booking these short term rentals back to back within less than thirty days. And then after showing these receipts, when the time comes and we eventually end up going in court, those who made these bookings Would have to agree to testify, so we as staff and as the office were planning, we were willing to do it ourselves. Um, but it's something, it's definitely a work in progress, trying to see what's the best way To kind of fix this or just find a solution for this, um, so we're still waiting that meeting with the, the owners' children. Um, we also had a few complaints in regards to some glamping that was happening, um, in the district, we Are also waiting from, uh, DPP in regards to the zoning of that area, uh, to kind of just let us know exactly what is allowed and what isn't allowed. So we will be getting back to the community and also the specific community members that had reached out to our office, um, in regards to that, but For the most part, besides going over a lot of the bills that didn't make it over to the governor this session, um, trying to revamp this interim to see what better ways to introduce. trying to revamp this interim to see what better ways to introduce these bills, but also the short, the illegal short-term rentals, that's one of the bigger projects that Senator Awa wanted to kind of tackle and just shut down one at a time. I think that's it for now. If there's any concerns or questions that I could take back with me, Senator Awa, I'd really appreciate it.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Questions from board members?
I just want to commend Senator for helping the community. I went to Los Angeles to be with the Shaka, showing documentary that they had at the Chinese Asian, Asian Pacific Theater. And it was very well attended. I wanted to thank you for bringing and working on the Shaka so that it becomes the legal gesture for Hawaii. And so, all of me, I totally enjoyed it. And thanks to our representatives from our side of the island that they were there to have the governor sign that it become the legal gesture of Hawaii. So we can thank you for the communities, from all of our communities on the corner of the road. My name is Auntie Keller and I represent Da'ia. Thank you.
Thank you, Auntie Keller. I will definitely let them know.
Thanks, Elizabeth, for your report. And this may have already been done with the board, but I would be really interested in seeing what the criteria is for determining whether someone is in violation of the illegal vacation rental laws. But the way you described them, it seems to me pretty impossible to hold anybody accountable. And I'm wondering if there's any effort to sort of look at those criteria and, and actually make them a little bit more amenable to the community. I can't imagine somebody who is renting a vacation rental being willing to testify. And that seems to me to be an unreasonable sort of request unless we find some way to incentivize them to do so. So is there, is there any clear documentation of kind of what the criteria is for DPP? And is anyone looking at it to see whether it's really adequate for, for the job?
That, those are very, those are good points, a good question. For, as far as I know, but I will go back to Senator Awa with your question. But as far as I know, it's like it was mentioned earlier in the meeting, right? It's, it's the way that they advertise it, right? It's, you can't, you're, it's illegal to book within less than thirty days. But, but a lot of these homes, specifically the ones that, that we were, that I was referring to, it says, it says you need to book for more than thirty days, but email, but you could email, but you could email us to inquire within. Like it's, it's not like, it's not like a full stop or a hard stop that it's like over thirty days or not, or not at all. But so the, the other way, right? Because we too were wondering that's, that's going to be impossible because people come on vacation and then they leave. And then who's going to want to come back to go to court and testify? So we as staff were like, well, let's just do it ourself. But then these homes are like three hundred, two to three hundred a night. I guess BYU just had a graduation, so this was the time that we were looking at it. And there was like two to three hundred a night. And there was, you know, with just some folks in the staff were like, okay, who's going to volunteer to do that? And so that was, that was quite impossible. But like you mentioned, I think it would, like you had mentioned, it would be good to clarify exactly what the criteria of it's, what the criteria is or what exactly makes it illegal. In writing, I guess, if it's something that we can get that I could pass along to the rest of the board members.
That would be great. Thanks, Elizabeth. And I'm wondering too whether there's a unit out there, DPP or an enforcement, that actually make the bookings and pay for them and then catch them people that way. Do you, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, I get it. Though, we, yeah, no, we understand. And I mean, who, we were trying to think of different ways, right? Like even hotels, I'm sure hotels would want them to be shut down. So maybe they could check into it or, you know, just in a way where it, we kind of get to the bottom of what we're trying to look for, but then also financially don't burden anybody, right? But yeah, so, but, but like I had mentioned, in the middle of us talking to people or just people that we know that rented these short-term rentals or these illegal short-term rentals, the owner had passed and so we kind of put a hold on it for that specific, for that specific unit and the units out in front until we're able to sit down with the next of kin.
Thanks, thanks, thanks for staying on this.
Hi, Elizabeth. This is Donnie Kelly Paddock. I just want to say thank you to Senator Awa. I spoke with him a couple of days ago and asked specifically because we were so interested and had applied for state G I A. And we did not receive one and I am very sad about that. However, he sent me a list of all the G I As that were received here for Ko'ala Loa Communities and others, of course, his district extends both ways. And there were many, many, many great, great things to fund across this district, his district, and he was able to accomplish that. I know Kahuku High School got some money and there were many others. I can't repeat off the top of my head. But we want to thank him for going all out to support our district. We need that support. These are small, vulnerable communities and we often get overlooked unless there's somebody really cheerleading in our corner. So we appreciate that. Thank you very much. Please extend my thanks.
Thank you so much, Donnie. And yeah, I apologize, you know, Hu'ohola were one of the groups that we had specifically advocated for to receive G I A both last session and this session. So we did also set up a meeting with one of the members that kind of oversees G I A over in the Senate to just kind of see where exactly is it that they're looking for? What exactly is it they're looking for when they're, when they are handing out G I As to see if it's something that we can do differently next session?
Thank you.
Mahalo, Elizabeth. This is Sunny here, Ka'ala Kahana. S T Rs fall under like land ordinance, so that's city and county. Kelly, I mean, can you guys work together with Councilmember Matt Wires office to, to recommend adjusted language that he could like submit a bill on the county level to make it easier for enforcement? Is there a conversation happening? Like I think we need to look at the specific language that's difficult and let's, let's support some suggested language to make it easier.
For sure. I agree that I can reach out to Matt Wire staffer today. But also when I go back to Senator Awa to try and see if they set something up with the council member to see if they can just collaborate together and hopefully full force they'll be struggling.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Okay, questions from members of the public in person? All right, questions from members of the public online? Please proceed with the question.
Sorry. Thank you, Elizabeth, and I also want to thank and encourage the Senator and to look into these illegal vacation rentals and specifically the impact on local families. Pre-COVID, I had over twenty of the students and youth that I was working with were homeless. And all of the parents worked. Well, one didn't, but then he got a job later. But they, or they were single parents or one parent was seriously ill. But the, what I'm concerned about, I think, could I ask Senator Awa in your office to look in Kahuku's enrollment? I believe before COVID, maybe eight years ago, when I was writing grants, eight, seven, six, the enrollment in Kahuku was eighteen hundred and now I think it's down to thirteen something. So it's like a twenty percent drop in enrollment in eight years. So many local families are being pushed out. And before COVID, I used to testify with somebody from Oha and she had statistics that Hawaiian families were the worst hit. So could we ask you to look into that? And the, the second thing about illegal vacation rentals, is it possible to do a class action suit or a RICO suit against Airbnb, Booking.com and all of these? Because they have reviews from their clients who said, oh, I spent a week there in April. The next one, I spent a week there in April. So these companies know that they are taking money from these clients for less than thirty days and that's against the law. So is it possible to get the Attorney General to go after all these clients? And then why it gets its money back and fines? Because according to the reviews listed online, again and again and again, many of them are rented in the same month. So I think my understanding is that's probably enough to get them. And I would love for you to go back after the clients themselves and to the larger companies. And I know that Senator Awa is a very bold person and that may be something that would fit his personality. So I greatly appreciate that. And I'm very sad that his, his initiative to stop foreigners from buying ag land, I know all property was not legal and had to be looked into, but it was legal to not purchase ag land and that bill that he put forward didn't go forward. And I, I would like to encourage him to keep working on that. I think that's an important issue and my understanding is it is legal in the United States to limit the sale of ag land to foreigners. Mahalo.
Thank you so much, Casey.
Okay, any other questions from members of the public online? All right, very good seeing them. Thank you so much. Appreciate your, your report and we'll see you next month.
All right, Sharon. Thank you. See you next month.
Yeah, all right. State House Representative, Representative Sean Quinnan or Stafford? We have anyone from Sean Quinnan's office online? Can you make yourself available? Okay, I do not see anyone, so we'll just look forward to making a note of that in front. Okay, that brings us to the last portion of our government reports. We do have special guests here from V O T. Thank you guys for coming back to our board. We really appreciate it. So we'll turn the time over to you folks for any questions that you have and then we'll open up the questions. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome. I mean, we're happy to be back. My name is Mel Chou. I'm from V O T and we have George Passitia is our administrator. We're here to answer some of the questions from last time. So let me start off with the shoreline budget update first. Okay, so we have louder. Okay.
We've got microphones. Let me try that. Could you come up to the point?
Let me restart. Let me restart. George Passitia is our administrator for Hawaii. So let me start. I'm ready to ask a question. I believe the answer of the, but let me start off with the shoreline project. So we have right now two midterms shoreline project in this area. Midterm means twenty-five years beside life. The first one is right across the Pa'ala Elementary. It's about like a four hundred, one fifty, around four hundred fifty million dollars of investment we're dealing in store who recently awarded, by the way, to check grant two billion dollars construction fund for this project. So it's going to help out a bit. The project is a little bit of a billion dollars, we're working very hard and trying to advertise this project. If not this one, then we're going to, so yeah, definitely project that was started out. And then another town project, the big one, there is one four year. It's about three miles of shoreline. That one, we just finished our job with a loan fund base. And then we publish and, and then we make it and show on the campus of the university. I will publish it. Maybe so just by the technical. So please, we don't have any comments, please give us the comments in there. Okay, and then so in Haukula, those that bad, the small one, right? And we wanted to take those out and put it based over there. Over there, and there is a long shoreline. So if you guys know who's been, you can, you can send us notes so we can reach out. We, we want to, we can temporarily take it. And then I think we have many issues about the Haukula Bridge, the Kipapa Bridge, that is delayed. Part of the reason was because the project, we had, we had built the joint shaft and building on the south end of the bridge. However, when they are doing it, we found that they should have ordered the re, the fiber reinforcements. Because they were bad to do that, that part of the footing is not on to spend. We're trying to work a little because we don't have that and the footing is not as strong. So we require the project and we need to take it out. We need to do it. We need a reinforcement. And so the project just finished remodeling it. And we're waiting to make sure that bridge is constructed first that that's where the delay is coming from. It's, it's for money to redo it.
Okay, which members?
I have, so you have more to say before questions?
Okay. And I said, I was that.
You said that we're fine.
Yeah.
Where is this at? Somebody buried there or because they're burying somebody out in the ocean?
People are shared in those sites or those sites and so they put up people.
Yeah, they want to.
People down.
But just thanks to me, I can put my email address because I'm on the chat.
About that as we do that because we don't want to contact them more than one time. Right, right. But as we do, you know, it's good to be communicating, right?
Thank you.
A question I have, is that okay? Donnie Kelly Paddock. When V O T came to the communities about both of those bridges, we explained right now, we have bridges had footpaths built of wood attached to the bridge. And we said, there are lots of children and people in general that since we have no sidewalks or any other way that walk on those footpaths, footpaths connected to the bridge. And we were told that they would not have footpaths in the future. And that, that is a huge problem for this community because how are people going to get through? This is a small community. We don't have sidewalks. We don't have complete streets. We don't have all the buildings that the town. We don't have all the buildings that the town folks have. So we need a way for people and children who are at school to be protected from traffic and have a way to walk along Cam Highway. So I want you to just, I plead for you to please bring this to their attention as they do this. There has to be some provision for people.
That concerns, it concerns me too because our, our people do walk. And our children, when we walk on these bridges to get to school. So I think that's a very good point that we need to let them know that there is no such thing. And they're not going to do a walk with our children. And and it protects them from, too. So I, I really feel that they need to look at it.
Do this one way.
Yeah, I just might add that if these are federal funds, I think those are federal funds and all federal funding. Make reasonable accommodation, especially for people with disabilities. And if there's no reasonable accommodation on the public conveyance. I think that may be contrary to the spirit of the law. So not only for children in the community in general, for people on wheelchairs and who may need special accommodation to cross a bridge safely.
Can I get that to you next week? I mean, in time because I don't have the information for now, but I can verify with our designers to see what's in procession.
Thank you.
This is Michael, not, not to pile on, but I, I'm a runner. And, and sometimes I don't use the footpath because I happen to be on one side, which is kind of stupid because it's actually pretty perilous. To be running upon the bridges because there's not enough space and you are dodging cars. We had a young man here not too long ago talking about extending the bike paths. And, and we have hopes of actually creating a walkable, bikeable community. If we don't invest in the infrastructure right now and we're building these bridges, you're putting us at a serious disadvantage. But when we actually may get to that point, because Cam Highway is a pretty scary place. As I said, I run it all the time. And I think that this should be a really high priority. Thank you. Sorry, I don't.
Thank you. Members of the other question, comments? It's the last one. I, I just have your point is, you know, we would like to complete on the team member. You know, that's, I've been on for a while.
Yeah, my past good land. In last year.
Okay, I'm looking at it. Appreciate that. Thank you so much. As far as board members, not move to members of the community in person. Please.
To that, Mike, the rightest citizen.
So I have two questions. One will be for the bridge and one for the pebbles, back the rocks. Since you guys, the last meeting, you guys moved to larger rocks. Is there any study that those were last longer than the last ones, like reaching the smaller rocks? Because it feels like just recently, we spent all that money putting the smaller rock. Then we have to figure out how to prove that it's not longer.
Yeah, I can answer that question. Okay, so I think I can answer that question. Like, back in the day, when we put in the bed with the rock is because that time we want to use the bigger rock. But the bigger rocks are not available that time. So that's the only thing we try to find a way to certainly that and put this rock over there and hopefully it contains something like the base of. It's because we cannot get the big rock and that night. So for VOT, when we do the shoreline, if that immediately we have to construct immediately. So that's what we can find. So that's a temporary fix. Temporary fix, we don't expect it to that long, maybe a year to a year, two years. Hopefully four years, that's a temporary fix. And we have the midterm project, which is Calva and KKPH. There's a twenty-five years design life. So we want to, you know, here, when the highway have immediately to, in order to create, to do a project on the shoreline. So so many environmental problems to create. It's very, very difficult and time consuming. So for us to get the older, right, the bad and the better, that is, we see it. We only need to get. Job. We have to make it long, then it's gonna take a long time. So. So in the future, the midterm project, all the rock size are engineered. So the, the way that it pays and how many it has and how did it goes in engineering. Need to confront that it can be set in twenty-five years in the future.
Okay, so this to justify, I expect to see like.
Yes, for the twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years.
Can I ask you another question?
Second one is going back to the bridges, like for instance, the walk path. I'm not too sure. I don't drive too much on the Tanya side. The two bridges that was recently built, which is in one in Fahana and one by Palu Wood. The hills have walk paths, the movie two bridges built by Palu Beach. Right by that coffee shop. You guys know if those two bridges, the movie two buildings, that it had a walk path for an addition? Or just as a wide also for pedestrians?
I know that and I, I love that. And we asked, but because there are so many kids that walk to school here and people in the winters have come along here and older people. We asked that there be a protective path of that bed. And because at any moment, we don't, the vehicles they love are many times speeding. They can change course and that would be.
So for sure people saying are gonna, are they gonna retrofit the bridges that are built that doesn't help in protecting?
I don't care what they do, as long as they talk to people.
See them retrofit.
There is or whatever it is, yeah. So.
So, so the question we made, you know, you guys gonna retrofit pedestrian safety for the two paths?
I have to get back to you next time. Thank you. That's it.
Yeah, that was, okay.
Back to the rocks.
Okay.
When you say they're engineered, where do you get these rocks?
The rock is not engineered, but then the things. Many and of the rock, where should it be? Then it's engineered. It's not the rock, the rock. We call it on the fur.
Okay, we are on island made of rocks, all right? And white asphalt is three man rocks. What you're putting there is not three man rocks. Why can't get three in rocks?
Three man rock is that like this thing, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, big.
So it's like at that time when this emergency work, work, we need rock right away. By that time is like, there's no availability of the big, big rock. So we got whatever we can get at that time. So in the future, when we do the midterm project, right? All the rock has to be right side and each rock would have to be tested. So at that time, I guarantee you a better.
I, I can, just because I work in the construction industry. So at the time, there was a lot of construction going on. There was, like, when they were doing that project, Ed called me about it because there was not a large size rocks. And so we're going to go back because a lot of development, a lot of construction, a lot of boardwork, a lot of those rocks are, you know, used to smaller aggregates, used for pavement, used for concrete. So that's, that's, there is, and there was an issue with blasting material that we had to work on. That basically kind of stopped the voyage for a couple of months. And there was a time where last year, the oil wasn't going to have any cement laying. But construction is very busy right now and it's continued since when they built that project till now. And probably the next five years where there will be shortages of material. But I'm assuming in their new plan, their new term plan, that you're looking at provide the rocks?
Size.
Size. Yes, bigger size rock.
Three men.
Can we get bigger?
It has to be standard. It has to be a different way and then the size. So just designer. The determination, the instruction.
Well, even Ed himself pointed out that the rocks in the, that had held so well. There were some, some places that were holding very well were the big rocks.
Yes.
And I have observed that very carefully since that statement. And he's, it's accurate. The bigger rocks do better. And surely.
Yes.
We could get bigger rocks sometime soon. I mean, why put so much money in on small rocks?
Yeah, so the, the small rocks was for when we first did those projects back then. But yes, the coming projects now without bees in the small rocks. It would be those. And she says engineered, you're actually looking at the size of the rocks and everything. Yeah. And like basically everything. So we are definitely not going to use small rocks. But we're a long term, probably how the end by the end of the project, yeah.
Any other questions from board members, please? Okay, let's go to a question that members of the public online. We have a bunch of comments or anything. We have a bunch of comments. The one, the question here, we asked about the empty street and how the homestead road over to Mouse.
I sent this up, which I'm talking about.
Is that option?
That's, that's.
It's a.
Not a cool stream, yeah.
Is that the same bridge we're talking about?
Well, it's a bridge on Homestead Road that just recently been rebuilt, yes. I thought it was finished. It's, it's not finished. You said it's not finished.
It's out of there. Catherine people said like, there'll be unfinished bridge on Homestead.
It's on Homestead, it's, it's not, it's not the, she could talk.
Oh, that's right. It's city.
I'm asking because of the DOT. I had understood that the whole construction had taken place. So the bridge could be strong enough to be used in an emergency if the frontage road was you know, washed out. I talked to them a good deal. If the road is completed, the bridge is completed, when are they removing all of their signage and their cones? They left the place littered, okay? So if they are done, and I'm not sure who we ask because, okay, that's all. And I had understood it had something to do with the DOT as a backup. That's all. That's why I bring it up. Thank you.
So that's the one on Homestead Road?
Yes.
That would be the, that would be the city.
And you can, okay, value that is confirmed in the stuff too. So I think that, yes.
Yes.
Okay, let's go back to the chat room. There was a bunch of other comments about it, I'm sure. I'm gonna be sending your, your comments for the, your draft, for the assessments. Are they gonna test each three man rock over a laser? So when the first three man rock over, it's like a fire.
Much. I think that's a problem.
Okay, and then there's a question about speed humps. So do we want to go to your, your professional?
Uh, yeah, there's a lot of questions about the bridges or the rock mitigation.
Any other questions on bridges or erosion mitigation?
Yeah, okay. So yeah, there were a bunch of questions apparently the last time and my apologies, I was supposed to come in April, but I got sick. So I didn't want to bring my quote to you folks. So we're here today. And I'll just go down the list. We can start there with those questions and then we can branch out whenever you, or if you have any questions about it. So the first one was I guess there was a concern that speed humps impact the EMS response time. And you know, when we first started this about four years, three or four years ago, we definitely talked with them and asked them if they were concerned. And they, they said they'd rather deal with this, the shorter, some of those delays, those slighter delays. But as time has gone on and we looked at those crashes, I mean, just amongst that, we have twenty, twenty feet in this area. And from three years before we put in those speed humps, there were, I think, about fifty-seven crashes in about three, two or three vehicles. Within the three years before we put them. And putting the main twenty-two, so from twenty-two to twenty, to present, twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty-four. There've been six, six crashes, no big tap. So for us, that's a slight delay for those vehicles. I mean, for EMS and us is where that, that huge reduction in crashes is, is worth. So anyway, that's, that's, that's how I address that concern. So why do we install so many between the hygienic store and maybe Palula? You know, when we look at an area, we kind of look at the, there are, you know, there are concerns from other agencies, from the public. And, and so we look at a bunch of things. And how we are, well, thank, now, Mainway Highway in this area is just, it's conducive for this type of, of speed mitigation. Because it's thirty-five miles an hour. We can't put any where the, where the speed is more than thirty-five miles an hour. It's just not a good grid. There's some places where it's thirty-five miles an hour. There's schools right along the highway. I mean, first, when we started doing these, those were actually a lot of our excuse me, we're working with DOE. So if you notice, there's a bunch of them by schools. In fact, the vast majority were by schools or there's a park and there's like a seven eleven or something or store nearby. Or there's houses, you know, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic. So that's why we put those there. And so it just, it just also happened. These were the locations. Those are the requests that came out and that's, that came up to be about twenty-two. In addition to that, we're actually looking at putting in another six or seven locations, actually six locations, another ten. So, yeah, I'm, I'm. I believe so. I can show it up. So Mainway Highway and I think now in place. Mainway Highway and Palula Beach Park by the seven eleven. Yeah. Mainway Highway, renting tires store and being the old around each other's center. Mainway Highway, Palu Beach Park. Mainway Highway and Nalibara Loop. Yeah. And then Swansea. Nine over, we said the there's two, there's two nine overs. It connects twice. I think it's closer to the hotel. It's the entrance to BYU. And then Swansea Beach Park, Mainway Highway and Swansea Beach Park. So we have so much directly in this area, this entire program.
You have some other questions you gotta go through?
It's a bunch of.
We can answer some of them, guys. Okay.
And so I, I think the Gombe Fairland's already placed this beat over. So I just kind of ran over that a little bit. You know, we kind of look at the, see what kind of history it has, what kind of speeds. Other agencies that first request, we really agencies that request and the community request, we kind of look at all of that. And, and we have traffic branch that decides, you know, whether we can put some, whether it's appropriate to put it up. If the, if the speeds in the area are within the average speed, if we look at it. If the speeds in the area, uh, are within the average speed, if we look at it, and it's within five miles an hour of the posted speed limit, normally we don't, but. But if there's a school there, or there's a park in, in a heavy, uh. Or the store, or something nearby, or a lot of, you know, uh, residences. We, and if, if you did criteria, but there was a requested one, it wouldn't likely be. So that's. So basically, it's. When it comes down to it, the bottom line is, you know. I'm the administrator, I will do that, is, you know, these requests if they come, I approve it along with, um, you know, I, I, of course, I can talk to administration, I talked to Ed. But, you know, outlines me, so, uh. I'll leave my contact information with you, and you can call my office if there's concerns. I can even give you my number, it's five eight seven, eight eight five eight seven, two 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 zero. And so, uh, yeah, so that's, that's what I want, uh. See, funding sources, oh, yes. So, uh, you mentioned that you can put them in places where you see that the speed is, and the speed is above. Speed, you know, forty-five miles per hour. I don't, I don't get it, because the speed limit was changed from forty-five to thirty-five, where you put the speed limit. It was not that you dropped the speed limit to thirty-five and then did a study to see if people were still speeding on Cape Highway, this is between Laie and Tukul. Where I think there are the large, uh, concentration of speed bumps between Laie and Kuaa, with not a lot of foot traffic across the highway, but mainly down to the school. You probably have nine, nine to ten, or seven, I think. I live this way, and I understand the school, where you have like a tabletop, where kids walk across, either just speed bumps or speed bumps, it feels off. It's based on study, you don't buy that, because it was reduced to thirty-five, and then the speed, when the speed bumps were put in, as justification for putting the speed bumps, because you couldn't do it at a higher speed. So if you would have dropped the speed limit, third police officers there started taking it, you know, it would reduce, but we don't know. You, you, and it, it felt like it was pushed there, and random ones were put in, in between it. And I drive that remote multiple times a day, and I'm telling you, my shocks in my truck are going to go out, because even at thirty-five, I don't know if you tried to drive it. They're really high, you know, very tight, but those are really high, and I have a truck. I can't even imagine if you have a sedan, and you go over, go over at thirty-five. Just pull, put it on cruise control and drive your car across it. And cruise control at thirty-five, and you tell me how you feel, if you had to drive that multiple times a day. But I do appreciate you being here, I genuinely appreciate you being here and trying to, like, helping us understand what happens as far as. Yeah, yeah, this, it feels very random, like, at those schools, yes, no problem, but it's kind of gradual, and we kind of tabletop for, like, a crosswalk under the setting. But when you put it in areas where it's like capital fresh, where nobody walks across a blue at a capital fresh, there's a. Actually, there's a bridge in Laie, and there's a pedestrian bridge on the opposite side. People aren't going across that side and walking across it, it makes no sense, and putting it right there. Um, so, there. And I can understand in that two-mile stretch, maybe putting one, but there's like five, in a two-mile stretch, it feels very, uh. It feels like it's overkill for what it's trying to do, and you did not give us a chance as a community to address it through the normal means of having reduced speed limit. Because if, I make sure if you tell everybody, hey, if you don't violate that speed limit, we're putting in speed bumps, everyone's going, like, I'm gonna slow down. I don't need speed bumps to slow down, I have to go down to thirty. And then pick back up a little, and then, and slow down, it's, it's just. It's terrible, and I'm not the only one that feels it, but was, yeah, so.
But I want you, I want you to get through all your questions before. Well, gee. I know you have like, how many more questions do you have?
Well, I.
You had one, I'm finished, then.
Yeah.
I, I have a related question, that's, is there a procedure for removing speed bumps based upon data and research and community input?
Uh, right now, we have not had any kind of requests, so it's not something we've thought about, but.
But, but, but it, it shouldn't just be based on requests, it might be based upon a, 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 a commitment to evaluating the impact of speed bumps and determining whether certain ones are not necessary, particularly if there's a lot of community input about their inappropriateness.
Yeah, so there's, I mean, at, at this point, that's what it has, that's, that's the start, right? When we come onto these things, or as a board, you say, here, there's an issue, and so I have to go back now and look at Laie. At the number that we have, and, and see if I, you know, look at the justification and read that back.
Thank you for that, yeah.
And so, that's where it starts, we, at this point, yes, we, a letter should be sent to us, or some sort of, or you can work through the board.
So that's what we need to make a formal request, uh, how does, what, what do you need from us to?
A formal request would help, but if you still send in, you call my number, and you make those complaints, I'll look into it.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's just many of the ways, but to me, you know, the more formal you make it, right? Because you can tell me, what if I forget? I'm sixty-three, you know? But, so that's why I'm just saying, if there's a formal thing, it's always better, right? You have a big organic organization, you send something, always better to have a letter or something to record that you contacted us, but it's not necessary. Yeah, you can call my office. Yes? Listen.
So you call, uh. They're all the same height, or in some higher, because of where it goes, some are higher than the others, but sometimes you go, oh, one is really smooth, or no, and then you come to the next one, it's back to bouncing your head off.
Yeah, so there are, uh, so it depends on the speed, right? So twenty-five mile an hour zone is gonna have a little bit lower than the thirty-five mile zone. We had in the beginning. Did have quality control issues, but in some of the design, when we first started the design, some of them, we did have some of that were high, we had to shave. So that's why I gotta look into that, because if they're high for you, it might be one of those in the beginning where they improperly installed, so.
Look, forgive me, Rob, but I, I appreciate, uh. Speed bumps, it's a, it's a, we know, and kind of accidents with that.
Yeah.
Out here, I mean, it's fatal. We have a lot of, especially on that street. So I, but, you know, I think it's just a little bit too much. But I, we find that, but even if you slow down, maybe when you go over where the next one is higher.
Yeah, it should not be like that.
Yeah, so I, I think my request is, if you're gonna do something, if you make it all, see. And maybe because once, if you go in, maybe the road come out, maybe that's why.
Yeah, we just, we'll have to look into it, all right, let's see, but it's, they are different heights depending on the speed.
I'll keep on the park.
This is, yeah, 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 they're, they're just so effective, I mean, they're slowing down. I mean, you know, we've tried so many different things, like flashing weekends, uh, I mean, flashing crosswalks, signage, water pipes. And even, even a stoplight, people still run. You know, and we found that these, because it's a physical joke. It, basically, people start to slow down. Uh, granted, there are some that don't slow down anyway. Still run into some of those, but as a whole, we're watching, you know, the speeds, we, speed, average speed reduction, they're in the, the ten to twenty percent range. And, you know, when we started looking at, especially, you know, now that nationwide we're going to a zero, uh. Zero fatalities, right, so that's where getting, kind of get to, uh. You know, these, that they're so effective, it's something that, you know, honesty won't go away, however. To look into, it's, if you're, if they're inconsistent, and in your truck, it just, it's too jarring, there's something, so we have to appreciate you letting us know where those locations are, so we can send people out to take them.
Please continue, sorry. You guys want to listen to the rest of the questions, and you guys?
Yeah, yeah, if I listen, we will listen.
Please go down, finish your list.
So the cost to construct one is about fifty to eighty thousand, depending on the width.
Just one?
Just one.
One?
Wow, yeah. But their effectiveness is. Oh, that's the traffic signal is nowadays, it's. So, you know, for us, we can't put traffic signals every, right? Imagine nine traffic signals instead of those speed humps, that, it's just ridiculous, but we put, to us, the, the. The, the return we get.
Sometimes you're almost.
Yeah. And then, so the one, and then there was a question about why the one at, uh, over here at the, by the seven-eleven and the beach park. It's just in, it's in, it's in design, it's going towards the design now, so it's just in the queue, there are just so many in front, we. Since nineteen, twenty nineteen, installed over, well over two hundred around the state, the entire state. So it's just, it's just got stuck in the line, so we're getting to it pretty soon, design's supposed to be completed in June. And that's pretty much what I had, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, okay, I'm gonna speak for me, I don't, um. Kualoa humps were overkill. I can understand if there's one at the entrance, and then there's the entrance to the beach park, and then entrance to Kualoa Ranch. But the one by the Sugar Mill, there's four humps just in that area, then there's Tulica on the beach park, which I feel are legitimate. I just, I'm concerned, like, you have six coming down the pipe. Have you, would you consider getting rid of some while you add this? Because, you know, I mean, are you open to entertaining that with having a con- conversation with the impacted community to say, of these, I mean, I totally get it, the beach parks, the schools, but I'm looking at, like, the Sugar Mill? You know? Kualoa Sugar Mill, I mean, I, I, I get it, but I, have you looked at assessing what you currently have? And what the, what to Mike, Mike said, I mean. Informed decision-making prior to action, but with community, and I, I totally support that. Are you open to looking at getting rid of some to prioritize the others, rather than just come and say, I'm gonna bring in six more, and I appreciate you telling us this, before it goes in, unlike the last time.
Uh, truthfully, it would be very hard, difficult for us to remove them, tho- those, I mean. Not physically remove them, but from a policy standpoint, now, the ones that, um. By the Sugar Mill, I remember we had complaints by the residences living, the people living in that area, saying even though we had those ones further up the road, that there was still, they were still speeding by their houses, and they were concerned. And so that was the reason we put those in, so, uh. I understand it doesn't seem like there's a lot of foot traffic, but we had concerns from the residences, from the residents in those areas. So when it comes to safety, and, and this, the reason it would be difficult for us to remove it, because we're making that decision, right? Is the safety versus the convenience, what, what's that, what's the decision that we have to make? And we're gonna choose, at this point, safety. Uh, again, that does not mean we totally rule everything out, so. Those, like, as we have two hundred something out there, we don't get that many complaints. We do get complaints, but not that many, and so, that, you guys sending them in, that will start, right? That has to start the process, so we will definitely look at it, I don't know if it will happen, I can't, I would, I would be lying to you if I said, yeah, we'll look at it and take it out. Right, so. See, George. Uh, I've said it, that's spelled A B C E D E. At Hawaii dot gov, and I'll, I'll leave my card with the chair, so.
A B C, George dot A B.
Yeah, A B, A B C E D E, yeah. Yeah. At Hawaii dot gov.
No comments on the. Uh, George, hi. I live here in Haula, and, um, we manage this facility, but we have a lot of, uh, food, food distributions. And one of the major sites is the pavilion at the, uh, Haula Beach Park. And we've been asking for a long time for, like, a crosswalk there. I think it might be overkill to put two speed humps in that area, that's my input. And there's this big parking area right across from the beach park pavilion, where twenty, thirty, forty cars park at a time, and, but people are going to that pavilion. And I don't know if you want one at the pavilion and one down there by seven-eleven, because I think most of the people that are, are coming across the road from seven-eleven are coming from the beach park. You know, and they, they could, you could put one sort of someplace right in between, so I think it would be a little overkill to put two there.
I think we're only planning on putting one.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I would like to recommend that you consider putting it not running in front of seven-eleven, but up towards the pavilion more.
Do you guys think you'll bring the speed hub and side walk together?
Let's skip.
Walk and speed home together, one of those, or?
And we, there really needs to be a crosswalk there, there's never been a crosswalk there, it's just way overdue.
Even if they've been there lots of times, yeah.
Yeah. A lot. Lots of community events happen there, lots of funerals, lots of church services, I mean, that pavilion is used. Because we have so little infrastructure here, we use that pavilion a lot for the communities.
So closer to the pav- pavilion and not by the seventy?
Please. Yeah, yeah. And then, the other thing I'll say is. I don't know why you'd want to put one of these speed bumps in front of Lily Oaklani, it's a closed-down facility, it's sitting there. They're not there anymore. So why spend your sixty-five thousand, eighty thou- fifty to eighty thousand dollars there until somebody actually starts using that facility?
The foot traffic to Tire Store, not that bad then?
No, it, people are slowed down there anyway, I think.
Okay, did you guys know that, uh, that Lily Oaklani is not operating?
Yeah, no, I, I did not.
They've been gone three or four, three years at least. Just like everybody else, they just packed up and left.
Oh, really?
I think so, the concerns too, because some of them think that. Like, if you do the best thing, you put it here, and there's putting it there, you put something in, and nobody knows. You don't think, I think they put it there.
Questions? Okay, we'll go to the doctor's.
Yeah. Yeah, just a question, um. I made several references to the fact that we decided. And you made several, uh, what we made reference that the policy is that we. Based on the many different questions coming from the community, I was just curious. Do you have a policy that requires or encourages? that requires or encourages community input during the process from engineering to implementation?
Uh, in this particular instance, for projects we normally do. Uh, for this particular instance, we're looking at safety features within the road. Normally, you know, we, we, we just put them in. This case, uh, you know, we're gonna be putting notices out a month before.
In other words, you don't.
Right on, though.
Yeah, that's all I meant. Thank you.
Neighborhood boards. That is an important system to use. It's, it's as little as just driving out to Ha'ula one night and talking to the neighborhood board. You know, and.
So we have Ben after you guys. You have a follow-up question in a while.
Just a, it's sort of an amusing commentary, but regarding input. If you're not at the table, you're on the menu.
Hello, Ben Schaefer. Uh, you know, actually, all of these, all of the people here have been talking about what's, what the problem is. And one is that there's no input for the community. You cannot go into any community and just put up things that you want because your engineering said this is what we need to do. You already spent one point two million dollars at least, and yet the roads get full of holes. Right? Now, what the DOT should be really talking about is how do we move traffic so that there is no speeding? And, and what the problem with that is that, is that the buses stop on the road. Everybody's going slow, and so there's nobody pulling over so the traffic can flow. The DOT should be making more bus stops in every bus stop where they're able to pull over on the sign. There's a whole, every morning, there's at least fifty cars behind the city bus or the school bus. Right? Are you guys looking at that thing? So before you start making more bumps, fill in the holes first. Do the job that the DOT was mandated to do in taking care of those roads. Number, and that's number one. And number two is that the, uh, the request to move it, I've been, I've been coming to your office for months, and I've been requesting that the ones that Ko'oloa be removed, that do not need to be there, like the ones that Sunny just talked about, exactly the same ones. The forty-five mile, uh, mile an hour thing that went down to thirty-five, so now they qualify for the bump. Yeah. Uh, I don't know. Where, where on the island are you from? You're not from St. Louis, right?
No.
Just because they lost the game, that doesn't mean they're gonna come back and put all the bumps over here because they're, they're mad because, you know, they, they lost, right? So, so, you know, that's the kind of thinking, some of us are thinking, eh, those guys are, are, are against us on this side of the island. So they go put as many bumps as you can. Right? Because somebody gotta make the money. But the bumps are still there. The section that's gonna have the turn, that, that turn on, and they, there are a lot of issues that we need to work out precisely about. And I, and I think you need to, I'll, I'll be calling you one down too. By the way, and the guy that lives on the road from us over here, uh, uh, Tanoai Reed, he's very pissed off because the bump is right next to his house. So he hear every little thing that's wrong with a car or truck or a commercial vehicle when they, when they go by, every single day, he hears everything. Yep. And so.
Okay. Oh, okay. I had two fast questions. One is you are working on, um, designing the repair in front of the highway in front of Ka'ava. I'm, I'm curious how that repair will impact those, uh, two expensively designed speed bumps that you may or may not have noticed, um, have increased the ponding. So I'm just wondering what happens to the speed bumps, uh, when the repair comes along, since they're in the same place. And, um, a caution, and I want it to be publicly noted, I really hope wherever you decide to put the speed bump in Ha'ula, you study the ponding that occurs in front of seven eleven and do not do anything to exacerbate that issue. Because anyone who knows here that you hit that pothole when it comes back, you're gonna have to have, replace your tire and maybe some other parts of your vehicle. And that is a well-known location. Okay? So please come out here when it's dumping tomorrow and study uh, how those, uh, those speed bumps are impacting the water flow, because they are. And they're accentuating the number of potholes and the degeneration of the highway that is not being maintained by the state of Hawaii in our area. Okay? Thank you. Um, those are my two comments. And yes, it'd be very nice to get to have input pre-construction and design of such extremely expensive, uh, I know a lot of people who wanna get in on, on that deal. Uh, that sounds like a great deal of money for us.
Yeah, so.
Stuff. Yeah. Thank you.
So Chair. No problem. So Chair Meatanga, I'll send you the list of the, the ones that are coming.
Appreciate that. So, so we do have a board member. I mean, her topic, she's perhaps might wanna do some of that.
You still on waiting?
Yeah.
Andrea, do you have a question? Okay, okay. We have one more question here. Go ahead.
You guys say things before, I mean, the traffic, the way the guys traffic fatalities. You guys look at the other impacts, like for instance, you guys know that there's no hospital on the Ko'ala range. The hospitals are thirty miles away, that even EMS said there's a delay, but is that delay compounding, you know, because Sean talked to the fire department that when someone needs a defib for a heart attack, every second counts, a minute, that's their percentage of survival rate when it comes to medical need. So basically, you guys count for the after effects of people who have underlying health conditions, and if they get into an accident, they get hurt, and you have to travel really far bringing the patient really far to a hospital. Does the Kukuku is a medical center. Yes, it does have a twenty-four hour medical room, but they're limited in what they can do because they're not a hospital. Hospitals can handle, take care of the life-threatening issues of whatever medical episode that the patient is going through. And putting more humps, even EMS, five percent, they do get delayed. It's that gonna be a liability to you guys because even the Federal Highway Administration said these are places where they should not go. And so you do extensive research for different counties, different population, different, you know, urban to city, to understand how big of an impact, what's the good, what's the bad, so that when the state makes, you know, uses their information, you don't have to do all this research. It's done for you. As I called the federal highway, which is in Washington, they're surprised how much humps just travel to a hospital. The reason why I can emotional because my brother got hurt in an accident in Wa'ua, head injury. Doctor said, his brother is lucky that it's only a twenty-minute ride to Leam. And if he was to get an accident down in Kukuku, making sure that too, he's not too sure he's gonna make it. Like, it's understandable for traffic. But, you know, as the saying goes, moderation is okay, but when you have too much, it's too much. Like, to me, I can just save for my personal, buy the screws. It's okay, but we have too much. This gets out of control. When is, when it's enough is enough. And also too, and you guys are in charge of I C N C for the drivers, that's what it comes down to, the drivers themselves. Change the license, how they get their driver's license. Tell you this, there's no requirement for drivers to take boat to school, to learn the driver's C D L. They're really strict. If you get a speeding ticket, you can't renew your driver's license. Why can't have strictness on driver's license? If people drive recklessly, they shouldn't be driving. You should have stopped the problem at the source of making the roads so unusable and unsafe where it's a point where things like this should never happen. They stop it at the source of drivers, not the roads itself. Roads didn't do anything wrong. If you use them properly, it's the driver that's responsible.
Uh, Jacob?
This'll be quick. I, I think it's really important to add one more thing from my standpoint. It, my neighbors almost lost four grandchildren in a car accident in Wa'ina'alo, between Castle Hospital and Wa'ina'alo. There's a new speed bump. And someone, they were slowing down to go over the speed bump. But the car behind them did not slow down, and it was going really fast, and it just plowed right into them and, and threw them into a rock wall. The car spun around, the car was totally demolished. I don't know how somebody was killed, but they all, except in the backseat, one of the, one of the grandchildren had no seatbelt because they were in the middle. It was a baby in the car. So that could have been much, much worse. But my question is, this was in the night, at night. So when you put a new speed bump in, wouldn't it be good to put stanchions out with lights flashing to let people know about it? I think five people that night could have died in that car. And, and I think it's really worth thinking about when they are installed, at least for the first month or so, there should be some sort of warning light there. My recommendation.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Andrea, then Ben with your question. Thank you. Andrea, go ahead. Andrea? Okay, we'll go to that.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a proposal that, uh, if it was for, I would like to let it to Governor Green and requesting that no more speed bumps be put in until the communities come up to a night of what they want to see done or removed. The community should be deciding that, not the DOT, and I would like, uh, you know, for the neighborhood board to write a letter to the governor and let him know that the community is in charge and that we wanna know, we wanna know where, we wanna be able to put where we want it to be. Right? Something like that. Thank you.
Andrea? Do you have any other questions for, um, the DOT, since they're here? Okay.
A last one. In the Poli Highway going through down towards Townside, last time I drove there, there was a hump, we have to take him to the the new, set, we'll set what they, how it's, and stuff. Do you have to drive back there? It's always a problem that. It's like the community and their red top together, and I've decided, you know, we want some of that spot. Only one. Yeah. Because they wanted the flashing lights, because they seen on the other side following by E D P U, that students that, you know, that had that one fatality, they put the flashing lights on. Ever since then, doesn't hinder traffic. As soon as they still cross safely and enforce town sense, the pressure light doesn't mean you're safe. You're still waiting to cross, to catch the driver's attention, like, hey, I'm trying to cross into the road, flashing lights are giving my protection. And since then, has been no fatality for any student. And that's why the community on the other side of the Poli, they wanted that because it's safety. So they're putting more flashing lights instead to catch drivers' attention.
Andrea, your hand flashed again. Are you, are you here?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. Okay. Uh, I posted two emails in the chat for people who are with the DOT, one of them, and the other was the consultant on the project for the nine worst roaded places on Kamaua Highway from Ha'ula through Ko'oloa. Four of them are in Ka'ava. One or two, I think, are in Ha'ula. There's one in Punalu. There's one at Ko'oloa. And so these are the most deteriorated and worst spots in this coastal highway section. Excuse me, that we all really depend on. Speed bumps are one thing, but this is the big picture. And so what this is, is that we have to try to get them with all possible speed to start on these projects. It's just come through the E A process, which is the environmental assessment process. And now it'll have to go to all the permitting from Shipti and everybody else. Cultural, you know, there, there's a million things that goes through. It might take two years before they even get going on these nine projects. And these are sites that are deteriorating really quickly. So I put where you can send support to with, at those addresses in the chat. And I hope people do it by the hundreds or thousands, because we won't have a road at all, worried about the speed bumps, you know, we'll have, we won't have access in and out of places.
Thank you, Andrea. Thank you. We appreciate it. We'll make sure it's in the notes. Anson with the contact. Okay, so final call. Questions for DOT?
Yeah, I'm coming from, uh, Miami to Cal. Ambulance was behind me, a full over. And nobody, I got back on the road and I kept driving. Ambulance never caught up with me because it was still going over the bumps. And so I got all the way to town, and even though the ambulance should be flying past me, they couldn't even get, catch up with me. So just like what you were saying, time is of essence to get those people to the hospital. And by delaying that time, you are actually putting the state, uh, uh, in a liability situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Opportunities to, and opportunities for us to voice our concerns. Thank you for your contact information. Okay. And then, uh, because I think all of us can, you know, we play a part in this. And as you know, I think our program on online for focus on it, just, you know, community support, people is big key. Uh, we feel we need to have that. So from my end, we know who to contact now. I believe we're all gonna push for it. We'll probably do something next, um, or meeting in June before we break. So if you guys wanna, anyone of the programers wanna from, entertain a motion, put in a letter or have a letter drafted, um, just so that we can go through those things they suggested. But thank you for coming. We appreciate it, uh, coming all the way out here for your time.
Our pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
With that, we'll move, we'll move on in our, to our presentation portion. Thank you so much. Uh, Aloha Markoni Alliance. Thank you guys for being with us and, and for being patient. Thank you. So Anson has your powerpoint. Can you come right over here? All right, so ready, you guys can go right ahead.
Can you bring chair, can you bring board? Um, uh, my name is Angela Huntmer, and this is my friend, Chris Tarski. I'm gonna go through a little slideshow tonight, and, um, we just try to keep it brief. I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with Markoni Point. And, um, the incredible wildlife that's out there. There are turtles nesting. There are turtles nesting, we got monk seals pupping, albatross are nesting there now. And we also have yellow faced bees, which I don't know, I didn't know about them until I met a yellow faced bee expert. But, um, they're really tiny bees, they don't sting. And before contact, they were the most, and, um, up until the middle of the 1800s, they were reported to be the most ubiquitous insect on the island. They were everywhere, they were in the mountains, on the beach, people's gardens, everywhere. And unfortunately, they've been reduced to very remnant populations now. They're on the endangered species list, federal endangered species list. They were the first bees to get protection. So as you may know, I'm sure you're all familiar, Marconi is a kind of pizza sliced, uh, piece of property. It has, um, the historic Marconi Station on it. And it is very notable in that sense because it was one of, it was the place, it was the biggest, um, telegraph station at the time when it was built. And it was the place where the first trans-Pacific communications took place wirelessly from San Francisco, relayed through Kehuku and on to Japan in 1914. So, yeah, we have these incredible species. I'm gonna turn it over a little bit to Chris, because Chris has spent many years monitoring the life, the, the wildlife out there, the seals and the, um, albatrosses now.
Aloha, everyone. You may have seen me standing here in Ha'ula with Sadie. And also when she hauls out, you see me just wave and I spent lots of time here. I live in Ka'ava. And, um, and I have experienced all the speed bumps too, because I go out to Turtle Bay twice, twice a week. I've been doing that for six years. We have a brand new albatross colony. It used to be that we don't, the albatross were only in, um, Kianna Point, but they're slowly making their way east. And so someday you may have some here in Ha'ula, but right now, Kehuku Golf Course is the furthest east that they have actually nested. We've got our seals, of course, the Hanu and the yellow faced bees. Marconi, uh, this, this pie shaped piece of private property has been in the news recently. And if you just go out onto Google, uh, or go to our Facebook page, um, you can read all kinds of articles that have been in Civil Beach and, um, the Star Advertiser, um, Environment Hawaii, all the different, um, news things out there. But there's been a lot going on, um, with, with, um, allegedly unpermitted, um, buildings, fences, uh, the coastal destruction. And also I'll go into that a little bit more, go ahead, next one. One of the things is that we have this, we have multiple fences that are unpermitted. They were built without DPP permits, uh, they were told to cease and they did not, and they just kept going. One of them is this, uh, iron fence here, um, that was built around on one of the lots. The, the albatross do not encounter anything like this in, in their natural habitat. And they, there's nothing that they can't walk around, fly over, or get to the other side. And, um, in the bottom right corner, you can see a pair of, of mated albatross and they mate for life and they cannot get to each other. Because their, their wingspan is close to seven foot, they have to have a long runway to take off, okay? They can't just hop over the fence like a minor bird. And, uh, and so they either get trapped within this fenced and cross fence slot, or, um, they just sit and wait and all. Also another fence that was not permitted, and this is the western boundary fence between Turtle Bay and, uh, Marconi land. And this fence goes all the way out onto the coastal and blocks anybody. And yes, you know, our beaches are open to everybody and it, and it, uh, is illegally there. Okay? And so this is what the coastline looked before October of last year. It was very lush, it, we had the napaka trees, uh, the heliotrope, um, all kinds of native vegetation, the napaka and the heliotrope is what the, the bees nested in. And all they don't nest in hives, they nest in the twigs. And, uh, uh, and it was a very thriving place for all kinds of wildlife. The turtles would come up onto the, onto the dunes there. We had the albatross nesting within the, it, and, uh, and it was just a very lush area. This is what it looks like after the disruption. They, um, bulldozed down, um, uh, and left, they, they, it was over a hundred heliotropes that were cut down and bulldozed down. All of the, all of the napaka was gone. It, uh, and the, and the few trees that were remaining, they were trimmed way up, so the bees cannot use them whatsoever. And it was just, it, I was just horrifying to see. And here's some more pictures here of the devastation. And the, um, the center picture there is the state entomologist trying to find any living bees and, uh, left. And, um, and everybody knows, I mean, yeah, they're little bitty bees, but this was, there's only certain places on Oahu, there's only three places on Oahu where these bees were left. And, and this is one of the places and it's totally destroyed. And, um, they're totally gone. And, um, they were trying to find even the eggs or whatever. And it was just a very sad thing. We had in, uh, in the area over here on the left, um, kinda towards the top of the, you can see how far the sand is now coming onto the land, um, because it doesn't have the vegetation and everything to keep, keep the storm surges. We have a, an albatross, they nest in the same spot or close within feet of each, each year. And this, and where they were nesting in the heliotrope and the napaka, they are now nesting on mulch and, and dirt and whatever. It's just, it's just heartbreaking, I, I can't tell you. Okay? So, um, we don't know how it's going to affect our Hanu nests. As of today, we have one, we found our first nest, um, on the Turtle Bay to Marconi, um, stretch that I walk. There's other turtle nests, but this is my stretch that I do. And we found our first nest, so we, we not sure if this is going to affect our turtle nests, because the storm surge is coming up. And remember, mama turtles gotta come up past the high tide mark. And now the high tide mark is way, way inland and whatever. So we don't know how it's going to affect them. And, um, as Angela, uh, mentioned, there, there's the Marconi Way Station down there. And, uh, it was right around Christmas time, um, there was, they demolished and cleared out this historical building. And, um, yes, it was kinda falling down and, and the roof is caving in, but we, um, that was, that's something of concern. And so the state historical sys, uh, society is looking into this and whatever. So, and, and again, on our website, on our Facebook page, you can see links to all of the different articles where Civil Beach and, and Hawaii News Now have done in-depth, depth, um, stories on these things. And so then, many of you have heard about the death of Ho'okeeva, who, whose shirt here, I, I'm wearing. And, uh, this was our first nesting pair, um, that successfully fledged a chick at this new colony. And I was out there on Friday and she had just laid an egg and, uh, the day before, and she was incubating it, waiting for her mate to come back, um, from, and she used up all of her, all of her resources producing this one ostrich sized egg. And she was waiting for her mate to come so she could go back and feed on the feed. And he would incubate the egg for up to a month, sitting there. And, um, and so I left her Friday afternoon, she was just fine. She was on the Marconi side of the fence. And, um, and then Saturday morning, the gates, this, these gates are normally kept locked and they were open, landscapers were in there. And we have found, since found out that a landscaper threw a rock and hit her, it was not kicked up a weed rack, or he, he threw a rock and, uh, killed her. And, uh, one of my friends was out monitoring, um, and she got entangled also trying to stay on her nest. She was still trying to incubate her egg as she lay dying there. She had blood coming from her mouth. And so my friend, um, threw H Mara and all, transported her to Feather and Fur, um, and she died unroted. And I was the one, the next day, that took her body from Feather and Fur to, um, into town and, um, or the oct, the necropsy. And, um, and I pledged to her, uh, I cried all the way and I pledged to her that I would do something about this, that her, maybe some good could come out of her death. And, um, I made a video, um, maybe you have seen it or not, but she, but it is there on our website or our Facebook page, I'm sorry. And you can see her beautiful chicks and her mate and whatever. He came back, um, after a few days, looking for his mate and this egg, and he breathed, he looked, he waited for like three weeks, um, looking for her grieving, calling for her, searching for her everywhere and all, because they do mate for life. And anyway, so, anyway, so what, as you may have seen on the news that DLNR had a, a, a board meeting and, um, they were going to, um, there was a proposed over $3 million in fines for all, for the, um, state, from the state. And, um, it's now been delayed because the, um, landowners asked for a contested hearing. And so now it gets boggled to some legal actions and things of that sort. But there was, we, dozens and dozens of people on Zoom waiting to testify. There was people on the pack boardroom ready to testify and, and support of the state and, and all, because we, um, they're in the, in the hearing as well as the people on Zoom never got to say anything because it, because the, the rules, um, are that it shuts down as soon as they ask for a contested case. And also we want to be able to give people an opportunity to say what they wanted to say, either in support or against, um, what the state had to say. So we are going to have, uh, our own kind of public hearing and all where you can either do it on, via Zoom or, or in person and we'll be posting information about that. We're not giving up, we're still fighting on to try to bring justice and try to make the people accountable. And that's what our whole purpose is, is simply to have the, the federal, state and local laws enforced, that no one should be above the law. And so. Yeah.
Thanks, Chris.
And so that's kind of, that's, we just wanted to come and give you information about what was happening here on, on our side of the island and let you.
If you have any questions?
Well, I think this is more for us. We had last week, I think, I have cuts came up or something. No, what?
We had asked the, that's where a neighborhood boards for letters of support possibly to be sent to the, to the board, um, DLNR board, maybe that's what you were thinking of?
Oh, I just didn't know, yeah. I, I just remember that it came up. I just didn't know what we did about it, what was asked of us to do, about the, yeah. Yeah, there's the, I have fans, that's someone that she, I don't know. It came up like, it's past me here or me before that? But.
But, yes. Yes, ma'am.
So, you know, Marconi is a historical place for us. I'm just wondering, I have to. They evolved and it's, you know, and what's going on? The, the people that lived there?
Right now.
Do they still live there? I, I know there were some Kuliana landowners that lived there and their families still live there. So I'm just wondering if someone, if someone go and talk to these people who have lived there all their lives and know the history of Marconi. And, um, I know for a fact that there is only one place that grows this, um, the Hinahina. Everybody thinks the Hinahina is a great, but it's not. It is a vine that grows only in Marconi. And one part of the time it used to grow up on the Lani Loa Point. And so as we were getting ready to go to the Maramana, we were trying to find, and the only place I knew that had Marconi, so we went there. But before we even could even pick it, we had to go through the families to ask permission. So I'm just wondering, fortunately, if anyone went to talk to some of these families that lived there, uh, do they know what's going on? Do they know what's happening? We're hearing all these things, you know, about Corne. And I think the question was a long time ago, asked what are these people doing?
Yeah.
So now it's, you know, it, it's really sad to hear all these things, but I don't hear anyone saying, well, Eddie so and so, you know, you know, I mean, have they talked to the people there?
Yeah, we don't.
That's my number one concern.
Okay. One of the people on our, on our board is, Lanell, what is the one else?
Lanell Damati? No, what it was, it was anti, is, um, the, um, we, we, we're, we're just trying to get the government to do their job. And we, and we all know here, you know, DPP and DLNR, it's so hard to just get enforcement. And that's all that we're asking for here. And thankfully, DLNR have really stepped up the plate with this and they're taking it seriously, which is really nice to see, finally, taking, um, you know, habitat destruction and the destruction of our native species seriously. So we're supporting that and we would love, I would love to get to know the neighbors and the history more, because I'm really interested in that too. But so far, we, we're just volunteers. We've just been trying to encourage the DLNR and encourage the feds and, and encourage the DPP to find out what's going on over there, because it doesn't look good. And so they're doing their job, but certainly I would love to, and we would love to network with people that have been there for longer. There's always so much interesting history.
And so Auntie, if you can put us in touch with some, some, I know, I would love to do that, please, please, I'll get your information.
I know that John still lives there. I mean, I, I even know that the Quinn family moved back to Marconi. And so I know that there's, there's, there's families there. I would love to be the person to contact them.
I would, thank you, yes, thank you so very much.
That's one of the things that needs to happen with, cause I've only heard, but, but I have not heard what the Ma'ainana, the people that live there, that, what's all history, that knows the place, that was there. that knows the place, that was there before even World War II, before they even built the airstrip. So I'm just wondering, I will get in touch with Auntie Tama for sure to find out from her and, and, and Uncle William, Aquin, that moved back to their Kuliana land. So I, I would love to do that.
That would be wonderful. And I will, we'll get your, our complete information.
And if I can get the information.
Absolutely. Thank you so very much.
And just, and I think the historical part of the culture is, is really critical. Also, engaging the families is, 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 but could be central to a sustainability plan. Because they have been stewards of these points for a long.
For a very long time.
So it's, 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 it's not just a polite thing to do. It's, it's actually a way of presenting.
Absolutely, yes. Very, very, very well said. And all of that.
Appreciate.
Yes. And unfortunately, the developer and some of the people that he has sold the land to privateize that or, yes, so.
What's going?
They have, the developer, Makai Ranch, owned it for quite a long time. He went under numerous different names, but he's now Makai Ranch. And there are some warehouses that have been put in there. They, eight, eight huge.
You can see that from outer space. I'm not.
Yeah. And some, and if you look at some of the news articles, you'll can see, see the pictures of the, of them. Other lots have been sold to landowners who wanted a parcel of land. And.
But they're all subject to action now by the state. And then they're contesting that. So they're fighting it out amongst themselves.
And so the, it's, right now, the land that's, that's causing all of the problems is all gated. You're not allowed on it. They've got security guards. And even when we try to go out and monitor the nests that are out there on Marconi, we're turned away. And we can, we can walk, we do a high tideline, which is high inland these days, you know? And all, but then there's one, one right there on the beach, another one is further inland. And we can only use our binoculars. And we cannot adjust the ropes or cones, because this little chick is now like a toddler stage, doesn't know it's supposed to stay within the ropes that we, that were put up around it, you know? And normally, we would move cones around or whatever. And we're not allowed to go and onto set foot on their land. So.
Anyway, you bought it, you live there or you live?
Well, yeah, so I should have mentioned when, when I started, I'm not from here at all. I'm originally from Ireland. So I'm like, you know, talk about transplants, I'm sorry. But I moved here 30 years ago and fell in love with it. I live at Turtle Bay, which is next door, in the condos there. And honestly, when I bought it, condo living is not really my thing. I mean, I thought, but it turned out to be the most magical place with so many endangered species. It's a treasure trove. And so that really changed my life. And, you know, a long time ago, when we heard that the hotel was expanding, you know, the community rallied against that. So I, I got more knowledgeable about what was going on around in the habitats and everything. But, no, we're, we're, we're transplants.
Yeah. My husband.
I promise I will get in touch with these people.
Yeah.
They just need to understand and know what's going on.
Yeah. No, it's tragic. I mean, it's really hard for local, the local community to watch what's happening. And, but like I say, thankfully, the DLNRs come, come to the rescue so far. So I believe there may be also federal action, because they're on the endangered species cell. And the DPP issues seem to be quite complicated, to put it mildly.
Yeah. And my husband, I got here because my husband accepted a job with Hawaii Telecom. And he kind of monitors the plants, the fiber between my, only way I can understand it. And then I took an opportunity to retire and to, to volunteer with, with Wabai. So that's how I got here. And we live in Ka'au.
Funny question.
Yeah. I just hope that we can all, what happens is deplorable. And I think we need to step back and look at more stringent regulations to protect the albatross, to protect the bees, you know? I'd never heard of these bees either. And I, I've lived here 30-plus years. So I, I would like to know, you know? And I, and I also come from a small community where we have worked to keep historic buildings in, in good shape. I mean, fixing them up and preserving them for the future people of the, of the state, so that they know the history and the important history of that. And I think that's equally terrible, that, that this landmark, and I saw it maybe 10 years ago. And it, it was, you know, it needed help, but it wasn't falling down like that. And I just, I just can't believe that we can't do a better job of all of this. And so I would hope that DLNR doesn't just levy fines, but they, they talk and think about, have a study, what should have been done, what could have been done that maybe would have made a difference in all of these things. And more stringent requirements of owners and, and education possibly, you know? People come from off-Ireland, they don't have a clue. And that's shame on them, but, you know, shame on us too. I mean, we should have, we, we should have some things in place that prohibit this kind of thing from happening, because it's going to keep happening if we don't, if we don't care enough to make those changes.
Thank you so much.
Any questions or comments with board members? I think that's the slide.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, okay. And we, at this point.
We will.
We will, yes. And we will keep you updated. And we also want to do some education on, on albatross and seals and bees, shirvano and of that sort, so that we can, they'll all can be good stewards. And whatever. So, yeah, we will, we, we're not going anywhere. Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that. I think it'd be wonderful to have a full-on presentation, or we can have, I'd love to have my grandchildren sit in on something like this, as well as myself. I really appreciate it. Just a little curious, this is very compelling, but it's, it's sort of new to me. Is this federal property, state property, private property?
Private property.
Oh, it's private property.
And it was bought by a developer. And then he, for years, was trying to sell off lots and has, now has warehouses on it, the things of that sort. You go out and, go to our Facebook page, it's just Facebook and then Aloha, Alaa. Aloha Marconi.
Well, you know, one of the beautiful examples of balance and harmony between our, our creatures who are kin and, and human society is right across the street. You have seals that come there, they've been coming there since I've been here for years. Everybody, they come here and relax and do whatever it is that they do. They come back on a regular basis. Everybody goes along and maintains their business. But, but we're all very mindful.
And, and the people on Kaula are so wonderful.
But it's education.
Yeah. When I come out and stand with Sadie, someone usually is there from the community or has put up some, some sticks or something trying to get towards back and, and.
That's something that could happen along the entire coast.
It's your good.
Yeah. Thank you for your presentation.
It's a unique fisher of life, of all of them.
Yeah, they're a good species.
Right.
So, yeah, so that, that is in the process. The DLNR thing unfolded and the concentration, I guess, was with that. Because I guess they're cooperating on the investigation.
Yeah, yeah. So both, they're federal level as well as state level, they are. And we work with them on, on both the, the bees and the albatross.
And, and to what Donnie said too, I really am love what she said about the protections. And yes, we need more protections specifically for albatross, because they're not on endangered species list as the ambient and the migratory bird treaty act. But there are protections. This is the irony of the thing. There are incredible protections and regulations on the books. Of course, we know, because we're involved in the community and everything, that oftentimes there's not enforcement. And even when there's enforcement, then, oh, they can negotiate down fines, all kinds of things happen. And it just seems so disheartening, but we're really hopeful this time. And then also, to your point of, oh, I hope it's not just money. It is not just money that they're looking for. The presentations that DOFA and OCCL gave at the hearing for the BLNR was very short, but very impressive. And you can actually read their, you know, it's one is long, there's, that's.
There's over 100 pages.
But it's not that much. And it reads very nicely. They really did a beautiful job of painting picture of the beauty out there. The OCCL waxed poetical about, you know, the albatross flying, and it was a beautiful day, and they had to hike in from Turtle Bay, and they couldn't find a permit for the fence and everything. It's a very interesting, very interesting and engaging pieces of writing. But they all, they were the ones that, you know, recommended X amount of fines for this, that, and the other. But they also do recommend mitigation, restoration, and perhaps some kind of conservation easement or, you know, other things that they could do to make up for that.
We have questions? Sorry, we have questions from the community? Okay. We have a question from PC Connor. Please, your hands up. Please proceed.
Let, let me see if I have the big picture correct. This big plot of land by Turtle Bay on the coastline was first Continental Pacific and the son, Jeremy Henderson, they're the big developers that, that came into Kahuku across for the plantation homes. And so many people were evicted. So some of those plots have been sold, like Yu Sai Khan, who we said it was going to be used for ag land. And that's the multimillionaire and her, her, it wasn't it, her plot of land that is not her, her, she's not producing ag like they said, and her representative had presented in front of this board. And there's, he sold other things quickly off. So it's basically a lot of multimillionaires who want vacation homes and a gated community on coastal and ag land. And they don't care if they're $200 fines from, from DPP. And DPP doesn't even enforce some of the $200 fines. It means nothing to them. I also wanted to ask you about Marconi Historic Sites, because all over the world, they are preserved and considered parks or, or science centers. And there was possibility of federal funding. And so this pristine coastline could have been something for the community. And the other thing I also, third thing, the last thing, I want to ask the community about, is my understanding is that area had some of the last sand dunes on Oahu. And someone has been flattening those, my understanding is, and selling the sand. And maybe some of the construction people or panel can tell us? Because I thought that you shouldn't be using sand with salt in construction, because that makes it weaker. And so is that an issue too? So for those of you who had, had historic knowledge of the area, I thought there were sand dunes there. And my understanding is someone's been selling the sand and they're not. So there, there are many issues with the developer just flattening it, with the people he's selling to, not using it, or not respecting the observation land or ag land. So I wanted to know, ladies, is that your understanding also?
Uh, yes.
What I saw.
Uh, there, yeah, there's very, there are very small dunes there now. There's really nothing. And I believe that happened maybe 10 years ago.
And there was, they, he, he did, he had a business selling sand with his father, I believe, I read somewhere. That was before I got involved in it. But, but there's, there's ponds that supposedly, on the property, that supposedly have been drained. I don't have any firsthand knowledge, so what I'm saying right now is hearsay. But there were. Okay.
So you're primarily dealing with the, the endangered species part, when there's violations left and right in all these different areas?
There's all kinds of things. And we don't know all that has gone on. But I've seen, seen it from the, the endangered species side, and I've saw the clearing of the land. And that's some of the things that, that are, are going on right now. But as for other violations or nonviolations, I don't know personally. And that could be something that's Casey, that could be looked into.
Okay.
So Casey, I do, I do believe in answer to your question about the historical aspect, the Chipti are still working on an investigation of the demolition. I, I think so. Yeah. Because OCCL, DOFA, and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. Thank you very much. Any other questions from residents of public online? That's all around here? Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
You have my contact, but please share your.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Um, okay. Moving forward in the agenda, State House Representative Sean Quinnon is here. So if you don't mind, more members will double back to cover him, then we can move forward. Finish up. So, Sean Quinnon, go right ahead.
Hello, everyone. So sorry I'm late. My son threw the world's biggest temper tantrum in Fun Factory, because that place is like, you know, you'd never have enough tickets to buy the toy you want to get. Anyhow, two really incredible things happened this legislative session, of, of both of which I'm very proud. We passed SB 2404, which is the largest tax break in state history for everyone. We did it for the working class, the middle class, the upper middle class. We did it for everyone across the board. So no matter what income bracket you're in, five years from now, well, we're phasing it in gradually, starting next year. But five years from now, in 2029, you're going to see huge, huge savings on your tax bill. So for a family of four with two income earners, making about $90,000 a year, their reduction in tax liability in 2029 will be $3,500 less that they're paying in taxes. And that goes all the way up to a $15,000 reduction at the higher end, when you're making multiple six figures. So everybody got a tax break. It's going to cost the state about $5 billion. But we're also assuming that wages are going to rise precipitously over the next five years. And there are other pockets of money that we can tap into. But this is really, I think, the beginning of more tax fairness in Hawaii, and hopefully the state not putting their hands in our pockets so much. So that's just, I mean, this isn't going to sink in until like two or three years from now, when they really start to kick in and you. this isn't going to sink in until like two or three years from now when they really start to kick in and you you get your tax bill and you're like, oh, my gosh, that's amazing. Uh, the other thing we did was we passed uh, S B twenty nine nineteen, which is the short term rental amortization bill. I have been waiting eight years to do this and the counties finally have the power to do as they see fit with short term rentals and and each county gets to decide for themselves how they want to handle this issue because the the problems are different on every county. But you've seen Mayor Bisson on Maui already proposed to convert 7,000 short term rentals into long term units. That's enough to house the entire population of Lahaina. Um, I will be brief because we've had a long night, great discussion about speed humps and and thank you Angela for that wonderful presentation uh, on Mark Conney Road and thanks to D L N R for issuing historic fines um, to the owner and some of the workers. So um, but as you all know, the work never finishes. I am available for any questions.
Right. Questions from board members? Okay, I'll ask the question. How much CFP do we get this round?
Oh, my gosh. I gotta go back and check the list, but I I wanted to say off the top of my head, it was 3 million for Kuhuku High, two for Laia Elementary. Um, and then other side of the district, we got, was it one or 1.5 million for um, Waialua Elementary? Uh, I'm sorry, Waialua Middle and High School for the robotics program. Um, so a good year. It was, it was a tough year for money. Um, my focus, you know, has always been on our on our schools, particularly our Cololoa schools. Um, because I think that they have the worst facilities issues of any of the schools in my district and the money has to go where the needs are. Um, we're still, we've still got some stuff at Connor Ramp. I think that I I'll probably have to appropriate another two-ish million dollars to Kahana Boat Ramp in the next two to three years. Um, because I'm not sure we're going to get the jetty that we really want without more money. And I think it's a really important commercial and recreational resource uh, for all of us, so.
Thank you. Questions from members of the public in person? Oh, sorry.
Hi, Sean.
Hi, Tukela.
I just wanted to thank you for helping get that bill passed on the gesture of the shaka. I was able to go to Los Angeles to um, you know, i- it was a very nice way to because everybody knows that that shaka sign belongs here in Hawaii, but I wanted to thank you for helping get it signed and become the gesture of Hawaii. Thank you.
It was my pleasure, Auntie Kella. And if you guys didn't know, Auntie Kella is a straight up movie star these days, so you might want to get her autograph after the meeting is over. Um, I think it's it's really a great cause because it's talking about it's um, appreciating our very unique local culture. And it was also a ton of free advertising for for that culture. And I think when people in New York or in California read an article about what the shaka means and what it stands for, I think it puts them in a more respectful frame of mind when they visit us.
Yes, thank you. There's a question online. Uh, is shaka patented?
Um, well, so now that we've made it the official state gesture, no, I I'm not sure you can patent it because if it really was invented in the 1920s, um, the copyright claim would have expired by now because there are limits.
Yeah. Okay. And then in the comments, well, I, we have Casey Connor for their hand up. Casey, you proceed with your question?
Mahalo, Sean, for getting off the money for the school. Um, I don't think you were on earlier. I believe though, when I was writing grants for Kuhuku High School, there are about 18 and high and intermediate, about 1,800 students. I think it's now down to 13 something. So our families, as you know, are rapidly getting pushed and priced out of Cololoa. And it's great that you're getting this money, but we're going to have no students left unless we get the vacation rentals under control. So thank you for that bill. But is there anything else that you or we can help you with it? And any, anything um, for better paying jobs? Because that's the other side of the coin. We need our families um, earning more than just um, just tourism jobs because those, most of those do not pay well at all. So a- anything on that area or can you look into that in the future? And can you look at our enrollment statistics? Because I think that'd give you more power to say, hey, wait a minute. This is really, really serious.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, thank you. You know, I think we're going to continue to grow in a few key areas, I hope. Um, you know, healthcare being one of them. Um, we, as as one of the other bills we passed this year, we exempted Medicare and Medicaid reimbursements from the G E T. That's going to be a doctor retention tool as well as perhaps a way to attract more doctors because those reimbursements and the way they they work here are are an impediment um, to getting more physicians. Um, I think that high skilled, quality nurses are going to be more and more demand and we're paying a lot of attention to that pipeline. Um, I also think that we have a lot of um, high skilled union jobs in the film industry where we've got a very generous tax credit um, that I extended until uh, I extended it for seven years in 2022. So, but there are a few more years left already, so now it's going to 2034. Um, so we're going to have that for a long time. So we'll have Yahtzee, Teamsters, um, you know, SAG-AFTRA. Um, so you know, I think these are going to be our focuses in the short term. I know everyone wants us to start a tech industry, but it's uh, much easier said than done.
Well, thank you. Any other questions from members of the public online? All right, very good to see you. Thank you very much. Uh, President Quinnon, we'll see you next one.
Mahali, guys, sorry again that I was late. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda. Committee reports. Do we have any committee reports from any of the
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Donnie.
Okay, um, I just um, wanted to announce that um, uh, we had kidney testing done here in the last week and uh, 65 to 70 people came in to have their kidneys tested and we really appreciate the Kidney Foundation coming out and they plan to come again. So if you weren't able to take advantage of this, our people of your friends or family members that you know, uh, everyone should come be checked out. And um, we also had an emergency preparedness fair at the Resilience Park uh, here in Haula, May 4th, and we had a great turnout. We had uh, 10 booths on emergency preparedness, uh, teaching people all kinds of things about from cert training to ham radios to a family plan. Uh, and HAIMA, the State Emergency Management Agency, came out as well. So um, we really wanted to get ahead of of hurricane season and we were glad to get that done. We also wanted to alert people that we've been working over the last year with Hawaii Food Bank and Department of Emergency Management to uh, obtain emergency food in a 40 foot container on the site at the Resilience Hub Park. So that will be put in place within the next couple of weeks. And uh, the trucking company will be bringing it out. They came over and checked out the site. Uh, our Huiho Haula poured the slab for the container, for the 40 foot container. And we will be alerting people prior to an emergency when it's approved by D E M to go ahead and and disperse the food prior to an event. So please keep in touch with us and please get on our newsletter list if you haven't already. We just need your email because that's one way we're going to send alerts out uh, is through that. Um, another thing is we just found out from A A R P that we got um, a a grant to set up a emergency communication network in Cololoa. This is just the beginning of it, but it's, we're excited to get started. We're going to start at the senior center up in um, Kuhuku, Haoli, Holly. We're going to train seniors how to use this emergency communication through Starlink. And we also hope to have one at PAX at Punalu. It's high away from the water and it will be a good source of emergency and and also A Asia Pacific International School since they are our only tsunami site so far in Cololoa. We want them to have the emergency communication as well. So we'd like to extend this to other sites and we're working on getting other grants to do that. But I think it's a step in the right direction. Maui was sustained by Starlink after the fire. Communication was a major problem for people, especially older people, seniors. And we want to do a lot more training with seniors in this area. Um, Senator Awah is coming out tomorrow for our breakfast and he'll give us a legislative update of what's going on in the legislature from his perspective. And um, on May 3rd, we got our official letter from HUD uh, regarding the funding for the Cololoa Community Resilience uh, Center. And we are very excited. We are wrapping up our E A and design process uh, this summer and we hope to start uh, construction, horizontal construction by the fall. Uh, up here is a little uh, board uh, where uh, if you haven't seen the design or the site layout, we have it right here. And um, a lot, a lot of work by the community in November, in November of 2020. The community was here in this building in every room, planning this facility with the architect. And we went through a series of workshops on all kinds of disasters. This is the layout on the land and this facility will be high up on the hillside out of the extreme tsunami zone. And it's even built up, there's parking under the facility and it's built up. I think it's 12 to 14 feet. I'm not exactly sure if it, but even at ground level, it would be out of the extreme tsunami zone. So this is the facility that will help a circular economy develop here. More jobs, more funding for people to live in their own community, live, work and play here. And you'll be able to provide a lot more services in a facility like this. So we're very excited about our May 3rd letter. It's sort of an official kickoff. And we've created a team that will be managing those HUD funds as we work through this process. Thank you.
Any other committee reports?
Um, I'm a neighborhood watch. I just wanted to announce that it is um, National Police Hawaii is celebrating lights Hawaii blue next week, May 12 to 18. Honor and support your law enforcement officers by wearing blue all week next week or putting blue light bulb in front of your house and thanking our uh, law enforcement officers.
And then I had a question because is this where I bring it up, Anthony?
Yeah, because I thought I was like in um, co-chairing with Alfred on planning and permitting. But yeah, but it's a funny, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I So
Yes.
Any other reports? Cool. That's it. We're not referring to public, the end point, committee announcements?
An announcement.
Go ahead.
Saturday, June 8th, uh, the Festival of the Pacific Arts, they're going to have uh, open to the public festival. Wa'are Day at Ko'ola Beach Park from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Um, uh, tours and rides, info booths, food trucks. Um, the Hawaii Savvy, the new racing association will actually end their race at Ko'ola Beach Park at around two. We'll have jet skis around, bring the ohana.
Ko'ola Beach Park.
Yeah.
Okay, then.
So is it possible that I can make an announcement?
Yes.
I twice told you not, but you folks know that I'm running for state extended, putting through a history of
Okay.
You're ready. Great.
Tucy?
Tucy, can I ask you to make your announcement?
Sure. In June, uh, we are going to open and start as part of the um, the Resilience Hub, the arts, uh, healing and arts and wood carving program. So um, we really want to focus first before we open it up uh, statewide, uh, mainly on the uh, our community. So we got master carvers, we have wood being brought in, redwood from uh, from the west coast and uh, power tools and tools. So uh, we will schedule a program so that it can also include children, must be accompanied by adults, adults and mothers. And we have a large uh, healing pole in which we'd like everybody from the Cololoa community to put their mark and imprint on it and then we'll standard at the right time uh, to coincide with the uh, dedication of the uh, Resilience Hub. More information on that later. Uh, also, I will send a PowerPoint uh, so you can just send it out to members uh, that goes in more detail.
Any other committee announcements? Uh, any papers online? I, I'm sorry, Kell, go ahead.
Sorry, the council and all know that uh, we have the May Day programs going on from Kuhuku High School just finished. So tomorrow we have Kuhuku Elementary and then Tuesday, this Tuesday will be Haula. And then we have uh, the last one will be uh, Friday will be Laia Elementary School. Uh, we also will be celebrating uh, years of Hawaiian Hawaiian Civic Club, we're the second oldest uh, civic club organized. Um, I know. Uh, the other thing too is we're trying to follow Kunas and you know, we so enjoy, we so enjoy that what you're doing at Haula. And some of our Kunas have come to Haula. So that's what I wanted to
Any other committee announcements?
Oh, so one more thing. Holiday Center, after that festival, they um, every Wednesday, they're planning to be at the festival with a canoes. Yeah, I I just got that yesterday that uh, uh, he called me and said that they're they're opening it up to the community. If they come at four o'clock at the P C C, the Hawaiian village, they'll open the gate so people can come. They can come to learn, they can come to help. So there's, it's going to be open every Wednesday. Yeah.
Here it is. Seeing no other ones. Let's uh, move on to the approval of the regular minutes. We have the approval of the Thursday, April 11th, 2024 meeting. Um, I'm sure we all sat down to review it, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Sure.
Oh, yeah, I'll change the, I'll change it to reg. Settle. Oh. But I'll just see it. Um, so we're gonna have it uh, adopted with amendments. Okay, so.
Okay, so do it. Motion. Motion to adopt the amendments? Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Reservations, objections? Here is somewhere.
No, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
I and we are good with that. Our announcements, the next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, June 13th, 2024. That'll be our last meeting before we have our break in July. Um, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.